I'd like to start this meeting, so first of all, thank you for coming out and welcome our guests. Thank you for joining us. As you know, I'm Amory Nixie for the Tate, Chair of Ramsgate Town Council. And it's a full council this evening, of which we haven't done for a very long time. I would like to keep my mask on if that's okay, but if you can't hear me at any points, please do notify me and I'd understand. I'm just doing this with Covid measures. Thank you. So, first item on the agenda, apologies.
We have apologies from councillors Stuart Piper, Linda Piper, due to personal commitments, councillor Young, who's unwell, councillor Rocha Araujo, who has a work commitment, councillor Wing, no given, and councillor Knight, who's unwell. Councillor Heatherington will be joining us, but is expecting to be about 15 minutes late.
Councillor Wing is looking after her mum who's ill.
Oh, oh, thank you. Okay, item number two on the agenda, declarations of interest. And before I ask if there are any, I'm just going to read out an email that was sent to the town clerk today, just in case anybody hasn't had the opportunity to read it. It's from Charles Hungwe, who's Senior Democratic Services Officer at TDC, and he says, Dear Laura, I am responding on behalf of Estelle Culligan, the acting monitoring officer who's currently on leave. Estelle advised on something similar before following complaints about people not declaring interests if they were members of various social media groups such as No Night Flights Over Ramsgate, and had taken a particular stance either for or against the airport. It was advised that the town council should consider whether they should declare an interest in the circumstances of each meeting, but it is just responding to a consultation about the planning application, as you have stated, then it's fine and they do not need to declare anything. I'll just make sure everybody understands that. Thank you. And that is from TDC. So now I ask, does anybody have any declarations of interest? Thank you. Third item on the agenda, public participation, and the first part of that is the public requests to speak. Do you have any town clerk?
No requests.
No requests.
Sorry, did you have a copy of the agenda? I just, it's buried on here and I can't find it.
Cheer with that.
Thank you. Councillors, there's, I think at the back, there's still just the agenda page printed off. I just dropped the whole pack. Yeah, it's just printed on there. I'll come on this.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem, no problem. So, 3.2 is report from district councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. And in front of you, I believe, you have a report from councillor Tony Onden, who is the district councillor for the Nethercourt Ward. Does anybody not have that? So, I would advise that we read through that in our own time. It will also go out in an email format for people who are not here. And then if there is anything within that particular report that you think needs bringing up at any time, then please let the town clerk and myself know and we can advise accordingly as to which committee it should go to. Thank you.
We also have updates from the Central Harbour councillors and the East Cliff councillors.
Sorry, I was just about to say that. Sorry. And so part of that was, the next thing I was going to go to was the Central Harbour councillors, of which I'm going to hand over to...
We're going to do this verbally, but I've just said to the chair that in view of the length of the agenda, as other people have sent these written comments, we'll add some written comments and circulate, we'll send them to the town clerk to circulate.
And with that, I go to the East Cliff councillors.
Yeah, we'll be the same, if we could move on, unless anyone's got any comments of what's there.
Yes, councillor Green.
I'd just like to say how useful these are. Keep it up.
Yep, yes, thank you.
Very good audience. I did expect my comment about, oh, okay, make next thing to the end.
Oh, keep you on your toes, councillor. Okay, so thank you. And with that, just before I introduce our guests, our county councillors, let me again just explain, due to the manner of this meeting, having quite a lot on the agenda, we'd love to hear your reports, but I am actually going to keep questions to another meeting. I'd like to invite county councillors back so they get more time for us to be able to put questions to them and for them to be able to answer in full. So this is going to be them just reporting back on items at the moment. And again, if you wanted to take notes of anything that's particularly pertinent to you or you'd like to raise another time, then please do. Is everybody okay with that? Thank you. Right, thank you very much, county councillors. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
Oh, no, go off you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Shonk.
I may be quite brief. It's been quite a busy time, unusual time because it's not like being at Casey Street years ago, because everything's done on the Zoom, doom and zoom. Anyway, since May, I have spoken up the replacement trees at Parkway Station and Lockton Binks House, the drop curb for Barbara Young, Eastern Smanade. Spoke up to Paul Valek about the tree at St Limes, which we all know about. His wording was that's going to come out. And I said, well, I think we'd better get in touch with around the town council because they've got other ideas, because I knew that you could put a retundal brick wall around there and save it. I do walk that area. I had a site visit with Paul Valek. We walked halfway around Ramsgate, looking at alleyways, edge roads, all over, people expect to walk in. I have had some emails from the Green about 20 is plenty. That's ongoing. That's something asked me about that in the High Street as well, 20 is plenty. But unless it's enforced, you know, the cars are still going up there 18 mile an hour, unless it's enforced.
Just as an update on that, councillor Shonk, we are actually enforcing, it is going ahead, the whole 20 is plenty in Nethercourt is actually going ahead. I know one of the things that was always a problem is money, but we have managed to make sure that the Nethercourt, gosh, start again, Amory, the Nethercourt project has the go-ahead.
I've had a site visit with Paul Valek. We drove around the whole estate, looking at trees that are overwhelmed with people's concerns. They'll only touch what's hanging in a road, not in the garden, but they might just lean a little bit on some of that. Most of the alleyways I walk, I make sure that they're quite safe and the lights are working. I think I had a concern about one, and that was replaced in a couple of days. Any spent signage in the town has been straightened up, replaced at the High Street and one in Jerks Road, that being backed in too. Another concern is if you travel a lot on the M2, Thanet Way, anywhere, you'll see all their Casey Street abandoned motor signs, which I complained about since 2019, 20, 21, 20. And I've actually moved them myself at Moncton roundabout. I swept up the damage, the car wrecks and everything else, and the pile of rubbish is still there. That's a main road interaction. So that's that. Like I say, Nethercourt, I've had a quick visit round there. I'm quite happy, not today, if you've got any concerns or questions, I would take them. But it's very different at Casey Street. I can't go into every detail, but it's not like going to as it used to be. You went in the front door, now you go round the back door, and there's nobody working. You can't even get a cup of tea there. I mean, we started at 10, I'll finish at 1, and I'll get a plastic cup of water. There's no way to treat any councillors if they travel to Casey Street. So what we do, and since May, I think I've been there seven times, not so much at Sessions House. We probably have another meet at the golf course for meat, so it's not the same. And I'm the most verbal person there. Forget about the politics, I speak up for Ramsgate and whatever we can do, anything to improve our law. It does concern me because I do go to the John Farnsworth meeting, and it's, everything seemed to be rubber stamped at Moncton, lots of housing going on and building. And straight away, Casey Street are going to put another or spend money on that road at Moncton. The road is busy enough anyway, because we've got a school there. Nobody seemed to worry about schoolchildren and schools. So anyway, it's been a hard fight. It's very frustrating because sometimes I feel I'm in the desert in this area. I've always said to people in Thanet, if you stand for Casey Street, you're taking your local knowledge there, and that's what we do. But is anybody listening? It's very hard. Anyway, I could talk all night, but I won't do, because it's, but I'm quite prepared to take any, if you want to send me some questions, or, thank you.
We did tell you to keep questions for another time, so I'm going to go councillor Green, councillor Orban, quickly. Can I?
Just the 20 is plenty, Trevor. Although you emailed support because of cancer, you haven't responded to my request for funding.
I don't promise nothing. It's the world that we don't promise nothing. The worst thing you ever do in this country is promise. It'll only happen when it happens.
No, it's great.
It is going ahead, Trevor. Councillor Constan has offered...
Offered money.
£500 towards it, but you haven't responded. Are you going to?
Lots of things are happening there at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time in Casey Street and all the advice. Councillor Constantine, thank you. I'll take it, sorry, councillor Orban said thank you, but no thank you, so I'm not just ignoring him, take your pardon. Thank you.
Thanks for going first, Trevor. I do agree with you that sometimes representing Ramsgate at county council is like shouting into an empty tunnel or being in a desert. On that, we do agree. So, since I've gone back, I was delighted to be re-elected with an slightly increased majority. It was really, really tiny, but I've gone back, I took a decision to stay on the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, because that's been very important, so I wanted to continue with the level of knowledge and the skill that I've built up. I've also gone back on to the Kent Medway Family Rescue Authority, which again is quite useful for us, that can always raise, you know, thanic specific things. And I did talk to the firefighters about the fire that they'd been on Harbour Street, and I passed along thanks to the people for their involvement, I thought that was appropriate to do. And I've just taken on another committee, which is Health Reform and Public Health Committee, which I think links with the HASK, so I'm busy with those things. I'll just run through very quickly kind of headlines. So on Saturday, I called a meeting for, well, sort of against Southern Water, and that's become a community event, and I think it's very important for the town that we make a better quality of water, especially with regard to the beaches, not only for locals and helping others, but also for our tourism offering. We don't want people not coming to Ramsgate because we've got a reputation for having dirty beaches. Now, there's a Facebook group for that, SOS Ramsgate, Save Our Seas Ramsgate, if anybody wants to follow us or anybody wants to, you know, to join in, because that issue is not going to go away. We've got an email today from, and Cathy Bales published in the Isle of Thanet News, but we got an email to say there was a discharge pending at Cliff End. So, and we know Cliff End is an SSRI, so that's really significant for me, and I read that to read, it's coming, you know, don't be in the water when it's discharged, so that's that. I've been very concerned since 2016 about Ramsgate's reputation and the crime rates for sexual crimes in Ramsgate, which were the highest, I think actually in the South East. So I'm revisiting those stats along with the local crime commissioner, and we've taken a while, but I've called a public meeting now with them, the police, with the DCI, on the 18th of November at the Comfort Inn, which will take place between 6 and 8 o'clock. So I'm looking for people that might want to speak at that. I thought reclaim the nights from Canterbury might be involved, but there's any other residents. So also what I want to do at that meeting is to try and do some sort of triage around street lighting, so instead of like having, you know, 100 people contact me, maybe we could organise a walk around for a couple of nights and really look at where those spots are that need the lights turning up, because I think there are a lot of dark corners, a lot of dark places, and that doesn't help.
Could I ask you to get that information in an email on its own?
Yeah.
And I'll send it to the town clerk so that she can send it out to us, just so that people are aware?
Yeah.
If that's all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So on the subject of health, the headline issues, the HazU, still a massive issue because it wasn't relocated, it was going to be relocated, but that hasn't happened. There is going to be some rationalisation or reorganisation of some of the hospital functions, I'm not quite sure which, but that is going to be an issue for us, because I think from what I can understand, we almost always suffer a loss, you know, so, you know, it was quite wrong that we lost the opportunity for HazU. But it's also GP appointments, we've got the lowest rate again in Kent, if not the South East, we've got the highest ratio of patients to GPs, we've got a problem with the maternity unit, care unit, CQC visit, and I think that's a really sensitive issue because we don't ever want to be saying that to people, because we don't want women to feel frightened about going into the hospital, so I always treat that with a lot of caution. We've got huge cancer waiting lists and we're not hitting our targets. There are all sorts of things, and due to Covid, they're not really getting any better. If anything, I think they are getting worse. And it is very difficult, as some of you might know, to raise these issues at Casey Street. Some of you would have seen that Universal Credit sweepstake that hit 178,000 views on Twitter, which was great, and they got an apology off the chair today on BBC Radio Kent. But I did say that I felt that perhaps with 178,000 views on Twitter, it was perhaps involving a little bit of damage limitation on behalf of the council. So there's that, and obviously the budget is coming out. I do support 20 is plenty as much as I can, you know, there is some funding there, if we can extend that, if we could do a bit more, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I think that's everything for me. I'll put those key points in an email and circulate them. I'm happy to come back at any time.
Thank you. This is the no questions thing, I'm going to go...
Always no questions.
False. We were trying, we were going to ask the councillors to come back at another, we could question them, but if there's anything that's desperately in need, I'll go.
As a point of information, it wasn't, it's not...
Certainly, absolutely.
I think that under future High Streets proposals, there should be 20 mile an hour zone in the town centre anyway.
Right.
So that was part of the discussion, that's part of the discussion with Casey Street. Obviously, it still has to be approved through Casey Street, but it has been discussed at some lengths with Casey Street officers.
Oh, thank you, councillor Austin, that's important.
Chair, again, just as a point of information for all councillors, and I don't know if you're aware, Karen, but I suspect you are, but there is a meeting tomorrow night from the police at the Royal Harbour School.
Yeah.
At 6 o'clock, I think it is, so I'll ask to attend, because I think it's important it is for...
Yes.
After the recent events against violence against women.
Yes.
And I think that's very, very important that we're there to give our views.
Yes, again, thank you for that, that's very interesting. And again, sorry councillor Heatherington, I said at the beginning, just because there's a lot on the agenda, we'd ask the county councillors to come back so that we could have an in-depth discussion with them, and if there was anything that you thought was pertinent to bring up in the meeting, please do jot it down or again notify us and we can take it from there. But thank you very much, both of you, for your time and for your work, and if it's okay with you, the town clerk will be in contact with you to see when suitable, so that we don't have everything else on the agenda, we can do like a 6 o'clock meeting or something and give you the time that you're very much worth, so if that's okay.
Can I just say, I did ask Paul Valek to come along with me, and he could tell you what I've been trying to get through to. I mean...
Would you just like to explain to everybody who Paul Valek, Paul Valek is the highways
manager at Sandwich. I do go to that site several times, I have done, because if nobody's answering emails or phone calls, I'm the big person, so I'll just go and see him first. If he'd respond today, he's looking to other things I've asked him to look at.
Brilliant, well, I mean, we'd happily have him...
Absolutely invited.
Absolutely, you know, whether you want to bring him along with you next time or we do something separate, whatever suits people's agendas, obviously, and diaries. Thank you. But you're welcome to stay and join us the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to leave, depending on what you prefer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on Saturday. Friday, Saturday.
Bye, my love, thank you.
Thanks. Bye, Karen.
See you, mate.
Okay.
That's a relative. Later on.
Oh, fair enough, that's lovely, yeah. Thank you very much, councillor Shonk.
Hi.
Moving on to item agenda number four, minutes of council meetings, and I'm sure you're aware, these are quite a lot of extraordinary council meetings that we've had in the last few months in the summer, so this is basically to approve all of those council meetings' minutes. So, number one is the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 23rd of June 2021.
I was to accept, Chair.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second, do it.
Councillor Green, I'll take, thank you. It's like an auction, isn't it? Number two is the minutes...
All in.
All in favour, yes, let's vote on that, all in favour.
Indeed, Chair.
Thank you. Take your pardon. Number two, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting on the 30th of June.
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. We'll vote on it once we're all backing them.
Away! Oh, just watching the escapades going on.
Councillor Austin, you start, that's so tight.
Miss me on you being framed.
Yes.
You guessed.
If I could have those all in favour of approving the minutes? Thank you. Item number 4.3, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 7th of July 2021.
I'll oppose.
Second, do it. I'll agree.
And all those in favour? Thank you. 4.4, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 22nd of July 2021.
Move approval.
Second, Chair.
Thank you. All those in favour? Councillor Rosetsky, you...
Sorry, I'll abstain on that one because I wasn't there.
Fair enough, that's...
I think I wasn't there the whole of August.
And finally, 4.5, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 4th of August 2021. I've got councillor Heatherington proposing.
Second.
Thank you councillor Moore. All those in favour?
I don't think I was in.
All right, and abstain from councillor Austin. Thank you. Thank you for that, okay. Item number five on the agenda, external auditor report on annual return 2020 to 2021. At this point, I will hand over to the town clerk.
On behalf of the deputy town clerk, very pleased to report that the external auditor has found nothing to comment on within the accounting statements for 2020, 2021. Clean Bill of Health, no questions. I do know that the deputy town clerk had quite a lot, quite a lot of challenging questions from the external auditor, who wanted very specific details as to why there was an underspend in this financial year.
Oh, for goodness sake.
Do anything.
Yeah, and apparently...
Another planet.
Apparently, all the councils were asked to give very specific details as to why there was underspend in all these areas, but she got through it and...
Move, we congratulate the deputy town clerk.
Thank you.
Thank her for her efforts.
Here, here.
And approve whatever we need to do.
You've just beat me to it, councillor Green, absolutely, I'd like it noted, so that's proposed and submitted by councillor Cootenden, and all those in favour? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, deputy town clerk. Okay, item number six, funding and grants. Now, it's number two I'm referring, isn't it? Number 6.1, we're going to go ahead with, and I'll explain why I'm hesitating in a moment, the 6.1 we're doing now. So, considered recommendation by the Finance and General Purposes Committee on the Ramsgate Fund's criteria and considered applications received for community funding via the Ramsgate Fund. Town clerk.
So there's two questions within this report. The first one is Finance and General Purpose Committee considers how to open up the remit of the Ramsgate Fund, hopefully encourage more applicants. So that is the first question, whether this, the full council is happy with that recommendation. Do they need a second or shall I talk about both?
What suits you, town clerk?
That's a cop-out.
I think possibly if councillors could consider and vote on this matter, then go on to considering the application.
Yes. Well, we're doing the applications later, so yes, okay.
But the Ramsgate Bowling Club is part of this application.
Right, okay, well, we'll do the first bit first. So councillor Green.
Move that councillor approves the Finance and General Purposes recommendations.
I'll second it, Chair.
All those in favour? Thank you. And then within that, there is an application for funding, so again, town clerk, thank you.
So we've got an application from Ramsgate Bowling Club for a grant of £2,052.86, and that is to purchase 64 replacement chairs for use at the bowling club. Their previous chairs are described as old tatty and falling apart and are considered to be a health and safety issue.
It's definitely not new.
And they have provided all the relevant documentation that is requested.
Open to debate on that, if you want to say anything?
I think that's very good.
Yes, shall we propose that we offer that message to them in...
It's a very issue, isn't it?
I will propose it, do I have a second, please?
Second it.
Thank you councillor Moore, and all those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, now, let me explain, I've moved 6.2, which is considering applications received for the community funding by the Events Fund, for the reason that the two applications themselves outweigh the amounts that we have in the bank. However, later on in the agenda, we are looking at some money that we might not spend, and we have the option of using that money should we wish to. So if you don't mind if we do that item when it comes up and then do the 6.2 afterwards, if we wanted to finance both applications, we could. At the moment, we couldn't, so I'm reserving it for that. Does that make sense?
Mate, it sounds fair, Chair, I think that's the way you should do that. It's an option.
You don't mean exceed the amount we've got in the bank, do you, Chair?
I don't mean exceed the amount we've got in the bank, exceeding the amount that there is for that particular fund. Did I make that, is that incorrect what I said? Oh, fair enough then. Stephen's good for it, we'll be fine. Okay, so, in that case, it's 6.3, to receive and consider a report from our town clerk regarding funding for the Citizens Advice Bureau.
So, last year, £20,000 was given to the Citizens Advice Bureau to fund the Ramsgate Debt Clinic, and the Citizens Advice Bureau treated that money as part retrospective, as payment for the last financial year, because I think they had originally been expecting to receive it in April. And so, our funds funded this project up until March of this year, and since then, they've funded the work by withdrawing services from elsewhere and would like to know if they can have another £20,000. I don't think that the council should be paying for things retrospectively, and I did ask them if £20,000 was committed today, would they commit to keeping the Ramsgate Debt Clinic open for a year from today? And they have, the trustees have considered that and have now approved, said that they would do that. Alternatively, if councillors wish to bring this back within financial years, there could possibly be a sum offer to them to take them round to the end of March in the new year. I am proposing that I think we could do with having a new grant application form for this type of organisation, with the thinking that then there would be another grant considered for April next year, that financial year coming.
So just to clarify that, basically, what the town clerk is saying with regards to another grant application is we'd sort of like a bit more information from them and a bit more in-depth knowledge as to what that money's doing. But obviously, this is the Citizens Advice Bureau, and I'm not suggesting that we take money away. But we do need to get it up to date with what we're doing currently. So councillor Rosetsky and councillor Orban, thank you.
I think the Citizens Advice Bureau is a much-needed aid to the public here in Ramsgate. And I think with the present situation, pre, post, whatever you want to call it, Covid, it's going to be needed even more. I would question whether 20,000 is enough. And maybe we can look at, yes, giving them 20,000 again, and then also look at maybe increasing that amount of them through what's going to be a very difficult time over the next probably two years I can think of, where people are going to require an awful lot of advice, especially with the government changing things all the time, grants and, and as today's budget shows, bots is available on university credit, et cetera. They're going to need a lot of help.
Yes, yes.
And I'm quiet.
Thank you. Just to come in there as Chair, I agree with you, and I definitely agree with the funding the Citizens Advice Bureau. I think, again, that the new grant application should reflect their need for greater money. So I think that's what we're encouraging them to do, by making it clearer to us, so it's more transparent for everybody as to why we're giving that money. So I'm wholeheartedly behind you on that. I think we need to basically get up to the new financial year and then stress the importance to them of making it clear why they would like more money. So if that helps.
Yeah, I think make it clear that this council does support them.
Yes, very much so, yes.
Totally.
Councillor Orban and then councillor McAdams.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Councillor Rossetti was just basically taking the words out of my mouth. He must have seen me notice. But I would say that I would support the idea of paying them till April.
Yes, yes.
And then, and then, as you say, Chair, and the town clerk has said with a new form, said to tell us what their requirements are.
What they've done up to now.
And what they think they are coming
To need, exactly.
Look at that at the time.
Yes, thank you. I agree. So thank you, councillors. Councillor McAdams, beg your pardon.
Presumably, the Citizens Advice Bureau gets funding from elsewhere as well. They're not just dependent on our money, are they? Or are they?
Well, we have asked this and not had this money, this information. I would expect the district council to be making a contribution.
Just for the debt clinic, wasn't it?
And I think, again, this is part of the ground application that we'd like cleared up, back into them. There's definitely areas there that could be clarified better.
Yeah. And the second part is, do Broadstairs not have their own debt clinic? And if they don't, which it seems like they don't, can we not somehow encourage them to do it? I'm not begrudging the fact that Broadstairs residents come here. But it would spread the burden a bit, wouldn't it?
Chair, I think we had this discussion last year.
We did, but it was actually about the women's, the women's issues and.
Counselling service.
The counselling service for women.
Did we not ask for Broadstairs to make a contribution towards it or something?
It was about the counselling service for for women. With regards to.
Oh, that's right. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it's absolutely a very good idea that maybe we ask for a breakdown exactly of who is taking up the CAB's appointments, because obviously people need them, so it's nice to know where it's from. So we get like an audit. So if nobody's got anything else to say, what I'd like to do is I'd like to propose £10,000 to take us up until the end of March. So it's not the full £20,000. It would take them up into March with the idea that they'll then reapply and we can assess how much they'd need from then on. So that's my proposal. Do I have a second, Chair? Councillor Heatherington, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you.
Chair, shall we take the questions that we want to ask them to the F and G P?
Yes, that's a very good idea. So because then, you know, if we were asking for clarity, we ought to tell them what clarity we're asking for, yes. Super. So if you just bear with me, I'll come back to 6.2 after item number 12, I believe. It is, item number 12, so I've got it in my pack in the right order, don't worry. Okay. Item number seven on the agenda is the Manchester Airport call for comments. So to consider the town council's response to the Secretary of State's letter inviting comments on the recently published Independent Aviation Assessors' Draft Report, suite of responses to his first consultation and other representations deemed relevant for the purposes of the redetermination of the application. Do I have anybody that would like to say anything on this? Councillor Orban, councillor Green.
Chair, I think, you know, obviously, maybe like most of us, I've read that. And I've read that report, the independent report, it's clear. It's clear and it supports the planning inspectorate's decision. And I think we should just write and support it. Thanks, Mr.
Okay. Councillor Green and councillor Heatherington.
Well, I'm really going to say what Stephen just said, that we should welcome the report. Secretary of State is calling for comments on that report and on the other submissions that have been made. I think we, as a council, should consider those and decide whether we wish to comment further.
Okay, councillor Heatherington. Sorry, and then councillor Rosetsky, thank you.
I mean, you know, it's not the first report that we've had to comment on. Let's hope it's, I reckon, let's hope it's the last, exactly. But, I mean, yes, I do feel that I agree with what's being said by the other two councillors.
Okay, thank you. And then councillor.
I obviously, after having spent 36 years in aviation, have read the report and find it totally flawed and therefore don't feel that this council should support it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McAdams.
Yes, I can't remember where I read a response to it, which says stuff like that, which completely rubbishes it. And says it's all going to be very green and it's going to be no aircraft fuel and all this sort of stuff. So I think we just have to be ready to counter the argument that, yes, we should, believe our skies and ruin life for everybody in Ramsgate yet again. But I don't know where I read it, though. It should have been in Cathy Bell's, it's RSP's.
RSP's response to.
It says that Ovarek Consultants have bitten a load of problems.
Councillor Green, thank you.
I, for one, would be genuinely interested to hear where the council thinks it's flawed. To me, it's a very narrow report, which is purely about whether there's a need in the industry that can't be satisfied elsewhere. It's not about everything else that I can see, which is a question that the Secretary of State asks. So if the council thinks it's flawed in that sense, I would be very well, I would look forward to hearing that, if he's willing to put that on paper.
Okay, I'll send you something on that, councillor Green. No problem.
Thank you. Councillor Orban.
Yeah, I think what happens a lot with the airport is that we lose sight of what we're actually against. And we're against the cargo hub. You know, RSP can open the airport anytime they like. Hasn't stopped planes coming into it. They can fly planes out of it whenever they like. What we're talking about is a cargo hub. It's not about stopping the airport because we can't stop the airport. It's got lawful use as an airport and therefore it can continue to be an airport. Our issue is in relation to the cargo hub and the amount of flights, night flights, whatever, that was going to be. And in our opinion, certainly in my opinion, would be bad for Ramsgate. So I think we must lose sight of that, of that point. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So to remind ourselves, planning inspectorate sided against the DCO. So it's the DCO that we are, again, like, it's not the airport per se or flying, it's the DCO that we are looking at. The cargo hub, the DCO by RSP. And Ovarek agreed with the planning inspectorate with regards to lack of need, which the Secretary of State himself has conceded on. There is, you know, he could not argue need. Now, our job, bear in mind that we have put an expert aviation report in, is to then reply to, have the opportunity to reply to Ovarek over the what we think with regards to their report. Now, we can do this in two ways. We can either, as a council, say, yes, we agree with the report. And we can do that and we can vote on it. Am I right in thinking that? Or we can get an aviation expert of which we previously hired to write that report for us. I'd like people to debate on that, please.
Chair, if I.
Yes.
If I may, I think the issue and the consultation that the Secretary of State requires is, as has been said, is very narrow. So you're either going to agree with it or you're not going to agree with it. I don't think we need to get any independent person to, you know, to pay them to write a simple, straight report on what has been, what has been put to the Secretary of State.
Yes, thank you.
Not think that we should do that.
Okay, councillor Heatherington.
No, I totally agree with councillor Orban. We don't need any more reports. We just need to be clear in our statement that we're writing in support of this one.
Just to honour the people that have written to me today, I've had various residents writing requesting that I ask for, as a leather court councillor, I ask for the council to get Stafford to write a response to Ovarek's report. However, I agree with what's been said in the room so far with regards to it's a yes or no decision. And I think if we as a council were going to just answer ourselves, it would very much be one or the other. And so I would suggest against my residents that we don't do that and also it saves us money.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to decide that now.
Okay.
We've got until, I think it's the 19th.
19th of November.
Of November, in order to send our thoughts in. We don't know yet what thoughts other people are sending. I think we could wait. I think we've got a planning committee meeting before then.
Soon, yeah.
Planning committee meeting is on there? Early November. I know it's early November, okay.
I would propose that we add a special council meeting to that date and decide then whether we need to get expert advice or whether we can write something else out.
Chair, I may?
Yes.
I would support what councillor Green's saying, but I would also like to see what councillor Rossetti has got to say on that from his point of view, because everybody's got a voice here.
Yes.
Everybody's voice must be heard. So that would be interesting to see councillor Rossetti's point.
I see you as an aviation expert.
Well, yeah, it would be good.
Okay, so we've got a proposal and a second. Do I have somebody talking or is it?
No, I was just going to give my apologies if we go ahead with that pre-meeting. I can't do that.
Oh, okay. So.
Chair. May I highlight that if we wait until an extraordinary meeting in early November, the time scale is then getting tight if the council did decide to commission any report. It's just something to be mindful, whereas at the moment, there's plenty of time to do that. If we wait until early November and a response is due in November, it's starting to get a bit tight.
Right. Anybody got any thoughts on that? Because I've got a proposal on the table which we need to vote on at some point, so.
I mean, I think the discussion has been that it's a yes-no answer. We will not probably not have to commission a report as we sit at the moment.
So the proposal I have on the table at the moment, correct me if I'm wrong, is to defer to making this decision to the planning meeting.
To an extraordinary council meeting to take place.
Yeah. So let's vote on that. Are we for that or against it?
I don't know.
Those for. Those against? Abstain? Thank you. Okay, super. That's number seven done. Right, number eight, policy and procedures. This is again where I hand over to the town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The standing orders and also the financial regulations that are on the agenda tonight are purpose written for our tier of local government, and these are the latest versions. The versions that are currently adopted by the council were correct about 10 years ago. There's been a number of, these are not.
You're saying they're outdated?
These are not reinventing the wheel on what you've had previously, but you'll see that there's a lot more detail and information in these. And I would strongly recommend that, subject to minor amendments, that they are adopted as written. With regard to the standing orders, you will have seen there was a few things that I've added in in purple text with yellow highlighting. I don't know whether councillors want me to go through.
Yellow highlighted, yes.
Or whether everyone's had a chance to consider those.
So I'm just going to briefly go through them, just so you've got. One of them is, we're meant to be standing up when we talk. It might be reasonable that we sit down. It all seems very normal, so if we're okay with that. Another just to add in.
There is a reason why councillors stand up when we talk. So there's only one person going to be up.
Yes. True. Would you like to stand up when you talk?
No, I don't stand.
Right, okay. Okay. It is intended that all council and committee meetings will be live streamed except for confidential items of business. That's something that we do now. Obviously, that wasn't in the standing orders before. The quorum of a full council meeting should be taken as six councillors.
Currently, in your standing orders, it's seven, but it needs to be one third, which is 5.8 councillors. And it occurred to me that if ever there was an occasion where the Thanet District Council, the dual hatters, had to withdraw from the meeting.
Yes.
And maybe have one person off sick, don't want to suddenly discover that business can't be undertaken.
Basically means that I just don't have to turn up sometimes, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so K and L on the things. So the post of Deputy Mayor will have status of unpaid officer. The council and their function will be to represent the town, not the council, at all civic functions, including syncboards, sports function or events. These unpaid posts will be funded from the civic budget. The post will be fulfilled by annual election, either at the annual town council meeting or by several mayor-making ceremony as the council sees fit. That has been added. And at civic functions where the town is, as in Ramsgate, is being represented, the mayor will take precedence, but for all matters where the council is being represented, the chair will have precedence. The clerk will advise and arbitrate as to which. The clerk will advise and arbitrate as to which function is being represented and his or her word shall be respected by both parties. That has been added in too. Okay, have I missed anything?
And the, there's some texts in red that I explained when I originally sent these out. And I think a couple of months ago, you all received an email from the monitoring officer explaining that if you needed to request a dispensation to talk about a matter in which you have a significant interest, permission should be sought from the monitoring officer at TDC. And unfortunately, I disagree with that. And I'm happy to accept the monitoring officer's more senior knowledge, but at the moment I don't have that. Whereas what I do have is Section 33 of the Local Government Act 2011 provides that a parish council may grant a dispensation to a member.
I am familiar, that is a law that I can quote to you.
And I think in advance of getting any advice from the monitoring officer, we should stick to the rules of the Localism Act. And then in turn, what councillors tend to do is delegate that power to their town clerk to enforce.
If I could just add in, so the town clerk obviously has been in dialogue with the monitoring officer. And basically, the reason she's questioning it is because things have changed since 2012. So this power bestowed upon TDC that they're offering to give to us is in debate because that has been changed since 2012.
So the text that's in red in the standing orders is as per the National Association of Local Councils' recommendations, which are that dispensational requests shall be in writing and submitted to the proper officer. And I would suggest either sticking with that or deciding that you will decide on dispensations by vote at a meeting.
Is that clear? Councillor Green?
I think following the advice is a practical way to go ahead.
So basically, we are allowing the town clerk to be the officer that allows dispensation.
I'm more than happy with that, Chair.
Okay, should we vote on that? Propose that? Do I have a second, Chair?
Second, Chair.
Thank you, and all those in favour?
Are we voting on all the amendments now, yeah?
No.
Just that one?
Just that one? If that's okay, we can go back and do the others in a second. Sorry, councillor Heavington, do you want to say something?
No, I was just voting.
Oh, great.
Yes, yes, enthusiastically.
So with regards to the other changes.
But actually, may I ask the councillors to first of all vote to rescind your current standing order 18.1, which allows you to reconsider this matter within six months.
I propose that we rescind.
Oh, yeah, second, Chair.
All those in favour? Thank you, it's okay.
I've rescinded for ages.
And then I propose we adopt these standing orders. Do I have a second, Chair?
Yeah, second, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Auburn, all those in favour? Thank you. Anything else?
No, financial regulations.
Oh, gosh, it's so exciting, isn't it? That's standing orders done, 8.2, financial regulations.
Once again, these are the model documents for our tier of local government. And I've added in, highlighted in yellow, some suggested expenditure limits, which, so at the moment, the clerk has £500, which I'm happy to continue with. I have to say that is, I think, on the low side, given a number of our bills. I think for the size of the council, a thousand pounds is more useful, but I'm happy to stick with 500 if that's what members would prefer.
I would propose to put it up to a thousand pounds. Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you.
So it's up to a thousand pounds for the clerk. Over a thousand to 500 to a delegated committee. And then over 5,000 is all items to the council. There is going to need to be a little bit of a change in certain practices about how things in here are enacted, but that's what Eileen and I to figure out and let you know.
Does anybody have any questions before I propose that we accept these? No, thank you, I propose that we accept the financial regulations as amended. Have a second, oh, no, hang on.
Sorry, there was an and/or question regarding petty cash, which I highlighted because I just wanted to speak to Eileen about what is, her recommendation would be. Because I think ideally, we wouldn't have a cash float anymore. There would be a council debit card in use. But in lieu of adopting that payment method, I think we do need, 6.1, we do need to still maintain a cash float.
So, yes, thank you.
May I ask you, has there been any progress bringing our debit? Are we still trying to?
Yes, please.
We are still trying to checks at the moment, but the deputy town clerk has been in contact with our bank to find out how we change this. And our banking is done with a classic town and parish bank account. I very much expect that they will, we're not asking something new. I expect them to have a process in place that we can then move over to and adopt. But we don't have the answers yet.
So just to clarify, when we're voting on accepting the amended version of these, 6.21 says, "The council will not maintain any form of cash float. All cash receipts must be banked intact. Any payments made in cash by the clerk or registered financial officer, for example, the postage or minus stationary items, shall be refunded on a regular basis, at least quarterly." That's what we're voting for. Does that suit the office?
Chair, so you, it's just been discussed with staff because I know Chris in particular frequently purchases things.
So this is not refunding the staff member, this is refunding the petty cash float. Because they strongly, officers should not be paying for expenditure.
I think we weren't having a petty cash float.
No, this is to say, for the time being, I think a petty cash float needs to be maintained until we can work out something like having a debit card.
Any questions? So I propose we accept the amended recommendations for the financial report.
Second, Chair.
All those in favour? Thank you. Cheers, right. 8.3, protocol, council and officer. Over to the town clerk.
This report stems from a few things that have been mentioned to me by officers, by councillors. I fear not to give any specifics, but I believe this report covers all these things in a document that can be. Yeah, that can be used by councillors and officers for reference.
Yes, councillor Austin.
Can I ask, is this a help document?
No, this is my document.
Right. I'm a little worried about the tone of some of it. It has unpleasant echoes of Thanet District Council's similar document, which I feel is unnecessarily restricted on the information access rights of councillors. And I do actually have, I should have done this beforehand, I'm sorry, that a couple of versions of Thanet District Councils with the comments of the consultant who amended it for Thanet District Council under previous administration, which actually points out the need for, if I can find the wording. I haven't got it. It points out that, here we go. "In the previous draft, at such and such a point, there was a helpful line. The general rule to be applied is that information will be available to members unless there is a specific reason why it needs to be withheld. I would suggest that this is a useful tone to set and slightly wider than the current wording. The tone of this whole section and that at such and such has changed from one which is focused on transparency with appropriate limitations to one which appears to be starting from the point of view of why do you need access to this? It is a very subtle point, but given the sensitivity of this issue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I just feel there needs to be a clear statement about members, the documentation that belongs to the council is the members' documentation. And there would need to be a jolly good reason why somebody was actually refused access to that documentation, unless obviously it's confidential staffing matters or whatever. And that just needs to be something that stresses around in the wording. I worry about the bit about the fishing expedition, which again is wording that's in the Thanet District Council one. And I quite see that going back over old stuff for the matter of curiosity would be totally inappropriate. But I do think we need to make it clear that, there's something I feel very strongly about with Thanet, that we need to make it clear that what belongs to the council belongs to the members."
Yes. Do you feel that this report, or whatever we're calling it, this suggestion restricts you getting that information?
I think there's a couple of places where I would like to see the wording more positive. I'm so sorry to do this rather than send it beforehand, I didn't get the chance.
You want them out, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I would just like to see something that states that we have, I've got so many documents, I've lost it now.
Is it something that we need to alter or something that we need to add?
I think probably something that we need to add in the section about common law rights to the effect that the line that was taken out of Thanet's, which I think, as the consultant says, a helpful line. "The general rule to be applied is that information will be available to members unless there is a specific reason why it needs to be withheld." If we could insert something like that, I'd be quite happy with it. And I'm on a mission to do the same at Thanet.
So are you, are you referring to 8.4?
I'm just trying, I'm not quite sure. Somewhere in that section there, yes.
So 8.5, I suppose.
Or 8.5, because it's.
Is there something that we could add in, town clerk?
Councillor Austin would repeat her suggested text.
Yes. "The general rule to be applied," I'll take my mask off for this so you can hear me properly, "is that information will be available to members unless there is a specific reason."
Hang on.
"The general rule to be applied is that information will be available to members unless there is a specific reason why it needs to be withheld."
Councillor Green?
I think it should be all information how applied to council.
Yep.
Anybody else? Yes?
Examples of what actually you mean by specific reasons?
Specific reasons why it needs to be.
Personal.
Personal confidentiality, for example, so that's the problem.
Absolutely. If it's always someone's.
Yeah, but that's a specific reason. So if I come in and say I want to see the disciplinary records of ex-member of staff, then obviously the town clerk has the right to say, well, no, that's confidential. But if I say, can I see the minutes of the meeting of the council on such and such a date, whatever, you know, and the documentation that supports that from before I joined, then in theory, I should have the right to see that because it informs what we do now.
Are you suggesting a, for example, because obviously we can't list them all because then you're.
A specific reason, for example.
Yes, for example of first.
Sample confidential staff records.
Right, okay.
So yes.
Can I ask a question here? Again, with regards to this, depending on what the information is that you have done, should that be done within the confines of the offices? Or are we restricting stuff being put online, sent to us by email or whatever that that may be? Especially if it's a controversial issue. Should that, should we allow that to go outside of these walls? Or should we insist that members come into here if they want to? I'm just playing devil's advocate.
There's something about confidentiality, isn't there, in this? I've lost it.
I mean, if something's in the public domain, this is an issue, is it? I mean.
No, 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 no. I guess what I was, I guess what was tricked in the back of my mind was when there is a document that would have, let's say, financial issues in there, which could be deemed, let's say, on a contract that we've got, where you could read the contract, but things would be redacted from that contract, you know, those type of things, I don't think that that should be sent out. I think those things need to be looked at and to worked around, but on the whole.
8.7, I've just found it. "It is accepted by convention that councillors will not share with unauthorized individuals or organizations in person via email or across any social media platform."
And is that on TDCs?
No, this is on ours, this is this.
Okay, oh, I should say, yeah, sorry.
8.7.
Yeah, 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 I got it.
So I think that probably covers it, councillor Auburn, does it?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to protect individuals and protect the council. That was all, because I think it's important.
Yeah. So, town clerk, bear in mind, this is a document you drafted. Are you happy to put that in?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, the things that were on my mind when this report was drafted was not actually to do with councillors looking through paperwork. It was not intended to be restrictive in what you can access.
Yes. I know of course, but I have pretty much experience elsewhere.
Granted, and it's just about what councillors are asking officers, asking councillors and so on and so forth. We've got something, you know, written down. So I would propose, so other questions? I would propose that we accept this protocol by the town clerk with the amendment suggested by councillor Austin.
Second, Chair.
Yep, thank you. All those in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you. Super, data protection and retention policy, it'll all go tonight, isn't it?
This is something that we should have in place. It's a well-trodden path now, GDPR, but something that's missing from our collection of standard paperwork that must be there in the background.
So it's a must-have, basically. Does anybody have any questions about it? Yes, councillor Green?
Just one about capacity. Do we have the capacity with enough skill to meet what we're proposing?
I mean, things that we'd like with this document, in practice, we have all of this. In practice, we have all of this in place, but we don't have the documentation explaining it.
Yes. I propose that we accept the data protection and retention policy. So a second, councillor Austin, all those in favour? Thank you. Super. Right. Here we are. Nine. Aims and objectives, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Let's aim high. To consider and approve the draft aims and objectives, considering if any previous key resolutions have been left off. This should be a rolling document that can be amended as work progresses. In short, this is our business plan and what we're doing, which is something that we really should have sort of had from the beginning, but let them in, eh? Um, but it is something that we can use as our basis of what we are doing as a council and where we're heading. And with that, I'll let town clerk talk to it.
Um. So I, I think in an ideal world, what had happened is that after the last election, you would have set your strategic objectives of what the council would like to do over the next four years. And then all of the decisions that you make are supporting these objectives. Um, coming in in the, the second part of this term, um, I've just tried to, to pull something together that, um, I mean, the, the wording of the, um, the objectives, that could be changed. They seemed reasonable umbrella headings that covered all the different types of work that are currently being undertaken. Um, and then as things are approved as we go along, things will be added to this. Hopefully, once a year, you will also, um, there will also be updates available for you to say that you can see that these things are progressing.
Um, so in short, it's a working document. I mean, we're, you know, we're looking to approve it tonight, obviously, but this is something that as things we achieve, things get, they get knocked off, you know, it's updated progress, et cetera, et cetera. So this isn't something that is set in stone. This is something that, that tells us exactly what we're doing now, where we're going. And as council meetings progress, this progresses.
Um, I, sorry, chair.
Sorry, no, sorry.
I, I also, it wouldn't surprise me also is actually, um, as we go along, I think I'm going to find a lot more to add in here on things that I'm not aware of yet.
Any questions? Yes, councillor Hudson.
Um, we're going to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, as is TDC or let's proclaim these are. Shouldn't we, um, proclaim the climate emergencies, TDC and many other councillors have done? I don't think we've actually done that. Um, Dean has.
We haven't adopted that.
I think that's something we should do. And Dean has already in two thousand nineteen done a carbon audit, so we've sort of done some of it already.
Um, so five point five, work towards becoming carbon neutral by twenty thirty. As.
Yes, it's on there.
Yeah, but we've had a lot of councillors declared a climate emergency, which from that follows on everything else.
Well, we can definitely bring that to a meeting to decide whether the council wants to adopt that as a, as a way forward.
Then you can embed everything in whatever, everything that you do in terms of reducing your carbon footprint, as in the county.
Well, I suggest that comes to a meeting, that, and which meeting would that come to, town clerk?
Um, environmental, or the council, whichever's coming, coming round first.
All right, so we'll, we'll leave that until then. Do you want to propose it for that meeting? Anything else? Yes, councillor Austin.
Tiny grammatical point, which is that S, uh, oh five on the first page, it needs a verb at the beginning. It needs something like sustain or promote or, or exemplify good governance. It needs something that says what we'll do, as we've got with all the others. Sorry, English teacher.
Fine.
Yes, well, I, could I, could I just say that in three point, three point three, uh, three point three point ten, if you can get one, I'm not a run bar operator, so if anyone's got one, I'll, 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 thank you very much.
And with that, um, I propose.
Strategic behaviour in meeting.
Accept the strategic objectives and actionable steps, as is at the moment. Obviously with the idea that we can change to a later date. Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Austin.
We thank the town clerk for putting this together.
Yes.
Thank the town clerk.
Overdue and appreciate.
Yeah, I did make some suggestions.
Uh, yes, um, it was, uh, yeah, oh, um, it, it's come to mind, actually, there's a few things that need to be added in, so maybe in a subsequent meeting, there'll be a.
Yes, an update. Update from which we can again vote on. So, sorry, with that, all those in favour? Thank you. Yes, well done. Super. Right. Welcome back funds. Ha, ha, ah. Uh, considering, consider a report from town clerk, I had to formulate the town council's request for the usage of this fund. Let me just draw my hand over. Um, say that we heard from our district councillor the other day, didn't we, about the welcome fund and that money's just come in. Now, we know for a fact that, um, TDC haven't quite decided what, well, I say that, TDC councillors in the room might correct me, but, but, but if not, um, TDC haven't told us exactly how they're going to use that money. Um, and so there's an element of, well, we can ask the things, but we might not get it. But of course, if we don't formulate what we want and put the proposal to them, they might not be aware of our needs. So it's very much, um, uh, an opportunity now to talk about what we as a town would like.
Uh, could I just?
Please.
My suggestion, chair, is that, um, we do have a, uh, a shadow cabinet meeting on Friday.
Right.
And so, uh, if we've got, if we decide here, uh, I'm happy to take that forward.
Thank you.
With the shadow cabinet to put to the chief executive.
Thank you.
Uh, on, on Friday.
Super, thank you. Um, I'll hand over to the town clerk.
Um, uh, well, actually, it's, um, you'll have seen a, um, a suggested list of options from the town promoter who's now joined the meeting.
Is she here?
Um, and members may wish to think there's anything in there that they particularly want to promote, anything to add in, take out, or even give the list to TDC as, as it has been presented. I don't, I don't think there's harm in putting too much in.
No, exactly. I'll see for everything. For those of you that may not have this in front of them, basically, I mean, we're talking lamp post banners, plants and planters, uh, marquee for a community hyper local market in Charlotte Court, bunting picnic tables, um, entertainment, regular entertainment, uh, seating, public space maintenance. Um, uh, online presence for click and collect, online shopping, so on and so forth. So there's a, quite a wide range of things that we could ask for. Councillor Green.
Personally, I'm happy with the list that's been presented to us.
Right.
And for how in the order that they are on the list. Um. But the cynic in me, um, thinks that TDC will ignore it anyway.
Um, the cynic in me also thinks that TDC will ignore it. And I had this conversation, um, previously with somebody, and yet if we don't put it towards them, they won't know what we're after. So I, I'm more than expecting TDC to, to write their own agenda, because they will have an agenda of what they want to do with that money. But we know that we need these things, so at least we could ask.
Well, if, if members are happy then, chair, I would, I would give this to the chief executive on Friday. And, um, but the one thing I, I, I do see is missed from here, I guess I'll miss it myself. Um, it's just a.
A clean?
A general clean.
Yes.
Um, but I, I think that's, you know, we'll, I'll add that on anyway.
I think that we should add that on as well. So, sorry, councillor Austin, councillor Moore, councillor Hudson. Oh, beg your pardon, councillor Moore, thank you.
Uh, could I ask, please, about uh, marquees for a community market in Charlotte Court? Not the marquees, but Charlotte Court as a place for a community market. Now, taken into consideration that when we had a market, it did High Street, Queen Street, King Street. They won't all fit in Charlotte Court.
So.
Probably different, perhaps.
It is, um, exactly. So the problem with the market, the, the, the Ramsgate market that we've had at the moment, is, um, TDC are looking at insurance and so on and so forth. And so that itself is a separate issue. Obviously, we, because we'd like a market, are thinking of something that we could do now, something in, on, on land that we could use ourselves. And therefore, any form of market in a space that we could at least um, organise is something that we feel uh, action. So it's not, it's, it's not the answer to the Ramsgate market. That's still with TDC and we're still waiting.
Markets that we were swimming out to, yeah.
Well, yes, and it, and it's going to be a, you know, a, a, a smaller market in general. It might not necessarily just be craft, but what it won't be is the Ramsgate market that you're thinking of. But it will be a form of market, yes, to be decided, I'm sure, with the town promoter and the town committee.
So are we ever going to have, uh, a market like we used to have?
It's being worked on.
It's being worked on and I'm, and I'm hoping so. Yes, it's a bone of contention, isn't it? Thank you.
Retro, oh, sorry.
No, no, if that's okay, I'll go councillor Austin. Thank you. And then councillor Hudson, thank you.
Property did confirm at his first drop in with members that he had had a lot of emails about it and that the, uh, cabinet member had pointed out to him that this was a priority.
Right, so, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to say? Was that?
There's something else I wanted to ask about this and I've forgotten what it was now, so it doesn't matter.
All right, we'll come back if you remember. Thank you, councillor Hudson.
I still found room for central Ramsgate, as in High Street, King Street, Queen Street.
Good question.
And always it, Newington, or most of the priority, or.
I think initially.
Always seems to concentrate.
Yeah, I think.
Those streets, doesn't it?
Yeah, certainly.
It's a welcome back fund. It's intended to welcome back businesses.
Yes.
I know, I understand that, but there are businesses in other places in Ramsgate.
Yeah, there are, so it could apply to them. So it could apply to them.
Yes, town clerk.
Uh, I'm actually just wondering whether the town promoter is uh, aware of any criteria regarding whether it's the Ramsgate Town Centre or whether the wards, if and how wards can be included?
It, it is essentially what they call the High Street, like the future High Street Fund, but it can feed things that feed into the High Street, which is, we all call the town centre. But it's the stranding of, but there is a strand in Strand Five that talks about green spaces. Now, to me, yeah, it, that could be about creating tiny green spaces like the um, community, uh, benches that I put in there with planters. Um, so it's almost like a pocket park, yes.
Hmm.
But you could argue that that is also intended for green spaces.
Hmm.
Because of the wording.
Yeah.
And things like picnic tables, we all have seen an increase in picnics in our parks, et cetera, et cetera. So they become a revitalised space for, for residents, but also potentially for visitors. Like Europeans use their parks and we tend not to. So there's maybe an opportunity there for, uh, public's green spaces.
Thank you. Councillor Alvin.
Yeah, I think what must have been lost is the announcement that Ramsgate's got nineteen point eight million uh, from the.
Eight million.
Living up.
Living up fund.
And that part of that, part of that, um, part of that fund is to be spent.
Good, okay, yes. Brilliant, okay. So, sorry, make a point.
Sorry, I was, I was looking at the plants and stuff and everything. It didn't say anything about the palms. They look really good out there, so can we get more palms?
If we get any money, if we get any money, we'll, we'll, we'll put it on the list, yeah. Brilliant. So, so I'm proposing then that we, um, offer this up as, as Ramsgate Town Council's proposal. Go on, councillor Green.
Well, sorry to interrupt you, but just, just to remind you, but we do have a certain set aside. A lot of that. Um, whenever we get from this one, we can match. Yeah, if that's important.
Uh, it is important and, and it's something that we'd come back to. It's good to know that that money's sitting there, although let's not tell TDC, so cut that bit out, the, uh, recording there, Dean.
How much, how much, ladies, chair?
How much is that?
Okay.
Something like forty.
Okay, so things, we, we, again, let's come back to, um, yeah, I don't know, finance and general purposes or amenities or whatever meeting it is with regards to, to, to doing these things, unless we hear back from TDC, because obviously these things need doing, as, as do other areas in, in, um, Ramsgate, not just the town centre per se, so that's something we should come back to. Anyway, I'm, I'm proposing that we accept this as something that we put forward as a council. Do I have a second, uh? Thank you. Take your pick. All those in favour? Cheers. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Are you okay with that open? Thank you. I have got this open, obviously, I, I pulled the blinds back because of the rattling. But being COVID and all, ventilation is key. So is everybody else all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's cold, I know it's cold, but I'd rather be cold and alive than, you know, cold and dead, as it were. Yeah.
It's not allowed on the property fest, don't you?
Yeah. Well, I said, your mother.
Information, councillor.
Sorry.
Well, my mama, why she can't go.
Adults, you know what the weather's like, yeah? Okay. Item number eleven, the cliff top shelters and I am going to ask to bring this matter to a meeting another time. And I'm going to ask to bring it to the amenities meeting. Because there's a lot to discuss here and I'd like us to spend more time on it.
Our second, actually.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah, all those in favour?
Yeah.
Did you say you'd ask somebody from the outskirts to say?
I haven't, but I can. You put that down to remind me. Thank you.
Chair, can I just point out that people on, residents on the East Cliff are saying we're not the, um, the glass can be, um, put in again, painted.
It's, 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 it's purely to do with ownership and stuff like that. And it does make a huge difference as to who does what and why and so on and so forth. Absolutely, but it, but it also, um, has a lot of ongoing impacts of various things, so it's not a quick fix.
And I'd just like to point out that a lot of money's been spent on it, so people may be support.
Yes.
But we need, you can't go on spending money on it forever and ever. It needs to be, yes, I think it needs proper ownership of it.
Yes.
On people, yeah.
Yes.
Whatever organisation wants to take it on.
Okay.
Well.
Yes.
I gave all my councillors' loans last year for the glass. I think Helen, did you give some, or was it?
But I'm sorry, I'm going to stop this because that's exactly why we're not discussing it this evening. There is too much to just mention about they need doing and just fill up my glass.
I was just wondering where that has gone.
Yeah, but, but, so, so, so exactly that, so that's why I'm going to suggest we bring it to a meeting and we discuss it fully, because I could, I could, it lists a whole load of other reasons we need to discuss it and we can't just decide on something now. So if that's okay with you, I'm moving on that one.
Can I just ask what meeting it's going to come?
A meeting is, I did say, apologies if you didn't hear me, sorry councillor Hudson. Which is, would you like to know when that is?
Yes, please.
Yes, so town clerk, come on.
Uh, well, actually, um, I believe it's going to be, um, cancelled because of, um, lack of agenda items.
Yes.
So we can either wait for the next one to go around or have a meeting distributed to the bus shelters. Weren't we going to have something? Yeah, there was going to be a replacement. Um, why don't we organise a meeting with a, a, a non-committee meeting, an informal meeting with the Ramsgate Society one evening for a, a normal discussion and brainstorm?
It would be a, idea to bring it to a meeting after we've had discussions and, and input from the Ramsgate Society. So should we get a date from the Ramsgate Society to see when they can see us and talk about having a meeting after that? Would that make more sense? Otherwise, we're deciding something and they haven't had a chance for an input.
And no amenities meeting next week.
They can talk about now, can't they?
I think it's going to be cancelled, I want free evening. Thank you.
Yes.
I need to go, chair. I do start.
You should have gone before you came in.
Well, can I go now, chair, or else there could be a puddle?
All right, darling. Thank you very much.
No, no, I need to go.
Yeah, certainly. I, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time. Okay, item twelve, which is, you'll understand why I'm then going back to six point two. So item twelve is New Year's Eve fireworks. Now, it's it's all to do with COVID, um, and keeping safe in public spaces and so on and so forth. So we are looking at basically, do we. So we are looking at basically, do we have the fireworks, don't we have the fireworks? And if we don't have the fireworks, there's five thousand pounds that's been freed up. Do we then decide to put that into the event funds that we are then going to be looking at to see whether we can support two funds, not that we have to support any, but we'd have the money there, so that's basically why we're doing this, does that make sense? And councillor Headingside, I don't know when you joined, but basically, I moved a funding up now. Brilliant, brilliant, okay. So, New Year's Eve fireworks, has anybody got any strong opinions about this? Yes.
I think the public look forward to it.
Two, three.
I think the public look forward to it. And they do enjoy them, I'm not sure which fireworks, I believe Broadstairs are now going to do their fireworks on the fifth of November.
Oh, okay.
Going to continue with it. No, it's not been cancelled, it's come back up and it's up and running for the fifth of November, so it would have to be quite a lame excuse not to do it. Because if Broadstairs can do it, why can't Ramsgate? You know, which would be, everyone used to know that the New Year's Eve ones are normally Ramsgate, not Broadstairs.
Okay, thank you, so councillor Green, councillor Headingside and then councillor Crichton.
Well, to me, what's good enough for London is good enough for us. Shouldn't do it. Too many uncertainties. We've already got the uncertainties of the weather, it's windy or raining, they're cancelled. Now we've got Covid uncertainties. On top of that, it's getting worse, starting to go.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heatheringside.
Well, I'm a big fan of the New Year's Eve fireworks, actually, and I think, you know, it's a good start to the new year, a lot of people enjoy it, the cliffs are kind of busy. I do see what councillor Green's saying, I mean, there's that issue too. And we don't really know where we're going to be, frankly, in a few months' time, anyway, so in theory, I'd like the fireworks, but then in practice, it probably won't happen.
Okay, councillor.
One more with councillor Zeke, I think the public do actually look forward to it and it is important, although I do recognise that in previous years, there have been cancellations because of high winds and other problems, but generally, I would support maintaining it.
Just if I can speak, I, obviously, I hear both sides here and I'm going to sort offence again, I mean, I hear the issue about strong winds and so on and so forth, but I mean, you know, it's December the thirty first, it happens the same time every year, so you're going to love that type of weather regardless, aren't you? And so I don't think that's something that we can use an excuse to have them or not have them. I'm a huge fan of the New Year's Eve fireworks and absolutely love them, and I'd really like it if we could have them, but there is the Covid issue and I would like Ramsgate Town Council to set an example of of safety amongst the community, so I am very undecided as to what is best for this, again, I'm open to hearing other people's views. Councillor McAdams.
If they ever love to have football matches and rugby matches and big stadiums full of people who are in the open air but confined, I mean, this is in the open air. I would have thought that it would be safe enough seeing as all those things are allowed ahead or considered.
Certainly, certainly, anybody else? Town promoter and then councillor Huxley, thank you.
And I think that with the Covid issue, it just goes to show, last week, and I think it was ten days ago, this report was submitted, things have changed since then, so, you know, the R rating is now around one point two, which is concerning, there is a rise. And the reason I mention that report is because we're very much talking about the New Year's Eve, but we've got the switch on at the end of, in four weeks' time. And that's more of a concern to me as an organizer.
Yeah.
Because you're all quite correct, the New Year's Eve, we're all spread out and people tend to be with their families, but the switch on, they're not.
Yes, so could I ask a question with regard to the fireworks, what's your cutoff date for organising it as a yes, I mean, at what date do you have to notify?
Fourteen events, so.
As well as supply the fireworks?
So I've already registered the event, so you have to pay to register it fourteen weeks in advance.
Right.
And I've spoken to the events team, you know, about this sort of indecision we're having, which of course, in this climate, they're being more flexible about.
Yes.
They're rigid about the fourteen week thing because they have to process it in advance. But in terms of the fireworks, I need to really touch the usual people that we use in the next week. Five working days, I would say, because obviously they will be making plans, they need to purchase, et cetera, et cetera. Tide-wise, we can do it, it's similar, but the other issue we have that we haven't had since we've had to do them on the main sands is the new development. Because you do have to be a certain distance away, and so we need to check that as well. I think high tide's something like, or low tide is, no, high tide is twenty to ten, I think. So then obviously the tide's going out, but so we'll have to be able to put them slightly further away.
But not much.
But not much, so.
So there's no leeway in deferring this decision until we get something a little bit more concrete from the government, is what I'm wondering.
I mean, I'm happy to discuss it with the fireworks team and I've contacted the events about both of our events this week, just to have a chat with them and see if there's any side responses from the Safety Advisory Group. And I'll chase that up, I did that a couple of days ago, so. But I wanted to have this discussion, but I'm then happy to, if it's okay with you and the town clerk, I can then email the town councillors about those conversations and maybe a decision can be made then, I don't know how I feel about that.
Or we're going to have an extraordinary meeting in November for Mansdon to return, but necessarily, this could come back on the agenda. Okay, possibly the town promoter could also find out what the cancellation period is with the company and the different points at which
Yes.
refunds can be obtained.
Yes, that was, again, my question of like, when do we have to let them know, but I noticed I didn't give councillor Huxley a chance to speak.
What was the government guide, advice, guidelines on this?
Would everybody, therefore, be okay if we brought it back to the meeting on the? Big day.
The extraordinary council meeting that's going to be organised before the planning committee meeting in November. That was previously earlier resolved for revisiting Mansdon, to also put it on that agenda.
Can't do that evening. Anybody else? Besides that, will we decide now, what would people prefer?
Is that too late or is that, is that timed enough?
Town promoter, what do you think?
It's tight for the switch on because, you know, there's things like the land train guy, he's had two bookings and he's chosen us, for example.
So actually, we'll tell them if we actually made a decision.
It's, for the switch on, it's tricky, because that's any, you know, two weeks, working days wise, eighteen days.
Yes. Did I hear earlier that we're cancelling the meeting next week on the third?
Yes.
Not be a good time to have an extraordinary meeting because now we've got two items on the agenda.
So progress with the amenities? And to discuss the?
Well, we're not doing amenities, we're just having an extraordinary meeting.
No, well, I think councillor Crichton's wondering whether the meeting next Wednesday could be reinstated. There's now going to be bus shelters.
Yeah.
Sorry, the main top shelters.
Um, crossed out, but, you know, we've now got, I think, three shots of the thing forward. And I'm just wondering whether or not that might be the day to do it, if that meeting is now cancelled, we have the extraordinary meeting and all of these things that we're carrying forward from today, including Mansdon, if that's rather than after.
And then it's, I mean, I'd suggest, yes, I'm thinking again of the Ramsgate Society who we're going to invite in, so I mean, in some ways, it's dependent on them sending a representative on that Wednesday.
We've still got two things apart from them, though, haven't we?
Yes, yes.
Just to say, I know the Ramsgate Society are having their, one of their, it's an annual, but they're meeting on the eleventh, so it may be that somebody can attend, but they might not be able to make it. They can take it to their meeting the following week, so they've got all their members.
Yes. So after all of that, thank you for bearing with me, I propose, therefore, that we take this to an extraordinary council meeting, move that extraordinary council meeting to next week and also reinstate the amenities meeting to see if we can do the shelters at the same time. So it's Mansdon, fireworks and then amenities for shelters, are we okay with that? Yes, councillor.
If I just ask the town promoter through here whether there's any other sort of event that we could put on that doesn't involve large crowds?
Well, one of the things we've thought about doing is having a few more Christmas markets, we've already talked about the hyper local in Charlotte Court. I think Addington Street are planning on doing a twelve days of Christmas, a possibly a carol service, we're hoping to do a late night shopping evening where we'll utilise Charlotte Court and maybe have some entertainment. There's potential to do.
If we could have, and plus we're good entertain. Spread out.
Are you offering?
Well, these are spoons, well, I am.
And but also there's potential for Radford House. In December, we could perhaps have, we had an indoor market there a couple of years ago that was very successful, that could extend, so this.
I'm really asking whether you could explore that.
Is that something that you could bring to an extraordinary meeting next week?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I just highlight, though, that for an extraordinary meeting next Wednesday, the agenda's going out this Friday? So there's, there's, there's not much time to
Yeah.
to consider it.
My report might have some gaps.
That's fine, anyway, I've got a proposal on the table, do I have a second, er? Thank you, do we all know what I proposed, are we all clear on that?
Next week.
Yeah, brilliant, all those in favour? Cheers, thank you for that. So, that leaves me with six point two which we're deciding on two applications with insufficient funding. Now, so be it, basically, you know, that's the outcome of the meeting. But I'm just going to go through, no, I'm going to let town clerk go through both of them, she's so much better at this than I am.
So the events funding has a remaining budget of two thousand four hundred and sixty seven pounds and twenty pence. That is on the understanding that we're still using three thousand pounds for the Christmas light switch on and five thousand pounds for New Year's Eve fireworks. So that's two and a half thousand, but we've got two grants. Both for events in March, so in the current financial year. The first one is from Power Fanett. They've applied for fifteen hundred pounds for a Ramsgate Day on the fifth of March. And then first one, application from Ramsgate Festival of Sound CIC, who are hoping for two thousand pounds for an event also in March.
Yes.
Yes.
So, again, we have the option to defer making a decision on these both being in March. Once we've got Christmas out of the way, it'd still be in this financial year, would you be okay in me bringing these back to a meeting at a later date when we have more money to consider them not being, you know, imminent?
The only question I would ask is, when do these people need to know by, because they will have to be booking and planning and paying in advance and so on, as.
Certainly, good point.
May I suggest these could also be put on the agenda again for next week, if there is a link between the expenditure that we're going to make on New Year's Eve and Christmas and these funds.
Brilliant, so I propose that we bring it to the meeting next week after we've done the whole New Year's Eve fireworks and so on and so forth. Second, I thank you councillor Austin, all those in favour? Thank you, I apologise for making next week longer and longer and longer, it's just one of those.
I apologise for making it next week.
Okay. Item thirteen, which just sounds fab, Volunteer Recruitment Day, Town Clerk.
This is something that I've organised previously and one thing I do know from previously is it's the type of thing that can suddenly require more staff time than expected, which is why I want you to be aware that and to approve that this is something that you want staff to be involved in, I mean, the big thing that can take up staffing time is when it comes down to advertising, but this is where, if you can, if you if you wanted to approve this now, we're in time to get an event promoted in the Community Ad Magazine that'll go out in January.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So I propose that we accept this Volunteer Recruitment Day proposal. Second that and all those in favour? Thank you, okay. Item number fourteen, High Street Recovery Fund. So, I've got notes on here, need to go and bring to the town planning meeting, have I got, we're deferring this to a town planning meeting?
There is time on this, consultation deadline is twenty sixth of November, so it could go to the town promotion if councillors wished, if they felt that was suitable.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, so I propose we move it to the town promotion committee, yes, it's town P, not C and G. Thank you, and seconded, and all those in favour, yes, lovely, cheers. Okay, Seagull Information Boards, consider a motion from councillor Crichton for Do Not Feed the Seagulls information boards. Councillor Crichton or Town Clerk, who's up for it?
And I've put before everyone just a small report laying out the project, as I understand it, as councillor Crichton's detailed, once again, councillors are asked to consider the the printing costs and the staffing time.
Yeah, yeah.
The background to this is I was approached by a resident in East Cliff Ward who was concerned about neighbours feeding seagulls. Their concern was primarily around actually the health of the seagulls with the secondary thing about the damage and everything else that seagulls cause. I liaised with TDC Communications and we managed to get redesigned the old boards so that it focused on the health of seagulls, because that's why people feed them. And we managed to get a whole series of, Do Not Feed Me, It's Harmful to My Health, very simple boards put up. I also approached TDC at the time with regard to the possibility of something that was a little bit more informative about exactly why it's unhealthy and basically, there's no money for that. So I came and approached TDC, thinking about it, this seemed like something more that TDC would do, sorry, RTC would embrace rather than TDC. And so I had a discussion with the town clerk with regard to it, and thank you for putting that together, but that's just the background to it. So it's, why is it unhealthy, not just, Don't Feed Me, It's Unhealthy.
Okay, has anybody got any comments on this for us? Councillor Green.
Just that last item, the recommendation. I thought a couple of weeks ago we decided not to dip into the Ramsgate Fund before cancel.
I think we did.
As well be, so in which case, it's where else in the budget?
Yeah, I'll be honest, my biggest concern of this and it's been noted before in various other meetings, is signage and the overuse of signage and the fact that we're trying to cut down and there's. And as councillor Shonk mentioned earlier, it's like signs getting left here, there and everywhere. And I just feel that it's something that's possibly unnecessary as a sign on its own. Because it's something that, if we were going to do something more educational, as you say, then maybe it might be a better idea to incorporate other things and so on and so forth. It's just a sign for the sake of being a sign, so it's just what's the word? Clutter is another word for it as well. So, that concerns me with this particular thing, because if we have this, we could have a sign for something else and so on and so forth. So, I'm not overly keen, I'll be honest with you. That's my opinion. I'd like to hear what other people say. So.
The gardening group in Winterstoke have a notice board, which I didn't know about. So, I went to know what you know about it, yeah. Which we could put your notice there. And there might be other existing notice boards that we could use instead of having specific ones for this, which I feel is slightly over the top, but.
T D C have noticed.
T D C's notice. There are historic, there are sort of information boards around. So, down at outside Wetherspoons somewhere, there's information boards about what you're doing in this area. So, there are others on other subjects.
I mean, could we, you know, could we go about this in a different manner, as councillor Mackinson has suggested? Like, one, use other notice boards, or secondly, do, you know, an article in the Community Ad Magazine? I know that's only to residents, I understand that. But it's something, again, we could have on our website, we could promote through Facebook, we could promote through Twitter. You know, so do things cheaply and again nationally, not just for residents, where we're trying to encourage this, but not necessarily have a static sign that's just going to deteriorate over time and just get ignored. Councillor Green and councillor Mackinson, sorry, councillor Huxley first, I beg your pardon, I didn't.
I mean, we could do leaflets, that's a thing to do.
I have thought some in East Cliff that we put up through T D C and they are quite effective. I agree, you shouldn't have too many, but if they're very
I'm, I'm, I'd be reluctant.
I did thought that businesses that have tables outside would have been willing to take something like this.
Yes. So, councillor Mackinson, councillor Resetzky, councillor Crittenden.
There are public notices by the beaches about no dogs on the beach. I can't remember else.
T D C P S P O one.
Yeah, that I would have thought was the place to put them. Because I think it's more of a problem down there than it, I know it is a problem in the town.
So, I mean, this is something that T D C councillors can take to T D C with regard to their board. I know you said you've asked for funding and things like that, but is it something that we can actually say to T D C? Look, you know, you need to update your seaside notices, quite frankly, because this is also a hazard. But I hear what you're saying and I'm all for making a campaign of it in a different manner and using the resources that we do have, especially with regards to social media and so on and so forth. Because, and I would advise against leaflets, because again, that's purely residents, isn't it? And we're really trying to talk to visitors as well. So, I'm not dismissing it, I'm just talking about the signage per se that I would have issues with.
Councillor Huxley made a good point about leaflets, but we have leaflets that are actually going out to the visitors all the time. For example, maps. I'm sure they've got maps downstairs where when visitors turn up, they all nick a map so they can swear they are and what they're doing. An addendum on that map saying what councillor Crittenden is asking for was probably, if you don't want to stick a board up, the kind of place to promote that kind of thing, because it's a visitor that needs to know that.
And also, absolutely, I agree. And also, the ward updates that we do, I mean, like you say, we have newsletters and things going out all the time that could be added on, especially to the wards that are above the sea, what's the word I'm looking for, next to the sea, anyway. So, yes, thank you, town promoter.
And there's just one thing that might be an opportunity is the Birdwise in East Kent are doing road trips at the moment. And they're going around all the schools, they're doing pit stops, they started this week and they're going on. They're on their Fanick District Council website, they're free, but they're trying to use, talk about migratory birds and the thousands that come to this area. But it could be an opportunity, if we've got in touch with the east birds, Birdwise, they're called, of East Kent, to say, you know, could you use that opportunity to point out how dangerous it is to feed birds white bread or, and, you know, that it's detrimental to their health. Because if you start with the younger people, because they are going around all the schools from Canterbury to Fanett, then it might, we know that sometimes adults learn from their children, so.
About chips, are they, right?
Definitely not.
They get them whether you want to give them to them or not.
They snatch them out with your hand and I think that's the, that's part of the problem is that, for example, if you go down to Peter's Fish Factory, there's a sign on their tables that says, we're not responsible for aggressive seagulls. Because seagulls will swoop down and they will snatch food.
They're not reading the signs, are they?
They're not reading the signs, that's part of the problem. I think everything that's been mentioned, I mean, I've had lots of discussions on Facebook, you mentioned Facebook, with regard to this, I've shared the links that other local authorities have published, publicized. One of the reasons that the cost on this is actually probably quite low is that actually the job has been done before. And I think when I discussed it with the town clerk, it would be hopefully tapping into what other people have already done before. So, what was really behind this was actually that this would expand on all of the other stuff that's going on, as well as, and not just something that stood alone, but it would be a part of the picture.
I think it's a case of, so you want to expand on what's already being done, but as a Ramsgate Town Council, we're not doing anything. So, to expand on it, I'm suggesting we therefore do something in the manner of which we can do easily and use our vehicles of Facebook, WhatsApp, not WhatsApp, Twitter, you know, Community Ad Magazine website, before we do anything else with regards to signage. So, that's my proposal.
Well, so you're cancelling my proposal and making an alternative one?
Well, we're opposed on your proposal, obviously.
So, but there was something, I'm sorry, I hadn't quite got it. There was something else I just wanted to add. I have put it to T D C that at the moment, it's not illegal to feed seagulls. There is, you can feed them, you can feed them what you like. However, I have put it that when the P S P O, which was just mentioned, is reviewed, that this is actually incorporated into it.
Okay.
Which would then make it actually something illegal. But what you, my discussions on Facebook have always come back with, oh, poor little things, they've got babies, they're hungry. And it's about trying to address that.
Well, let's, I'm conscious of time as well. So, councillor Crittenden has a proposal on the table. Is anybody seconding that? Councillor Resetzky, right. All those in favour of councillor Crittenden's suggestion of four signs along the seafront? If you're for it, you're against it? There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Confidence matters. So, I'm going to propose, we have the exclusion of the public and press at this moment. So, thank you very much, town promoter.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Do I have a, do I have a second, uh? Open, yeah. Do I have a second for the exclusion of public and press, please? And those in favour? Thank you. Okay.